5:33 PM and we will call this meeting to order. It has been posted as required by state law. We have a quorum of the commission at this time and we will have the other commissioners that will be joining us shortly. Thank you for coming to the Harlingen Museum. If this is your first time here, please make sure to look around before you head out. I also want to let those of you that are standing up that there are some seats up here in the front. If you'd like to sit up here, we'd love to provide you a place to sit. If you want to stand, that's okay too, but know that there is some seats up here and I see a couple over here sprinkled around too. We'd love to accommodate you. At this time, and let the record reflect that Commissioner Pettis has joined us as well, this time we'll ask for everybody to please rise as Mayor Protem Ford Kinsley leads us in our invocation.
Gracious God, we thank you for the opportunity to serve our community. Grant us wisdom in our decisions, clarity in our discussions, and compassion in our actions. May we work together with integrity and respect, always seeking the common good. Bless this meeting and all who are gathered here today. Amen.
Now the pledge.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mark.
Under state law, a conflict of interest exists if a commission member or certain members of that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. Members with a conflict of interest cannot participate in the discussion or vote on the agenda item. Are there any known conflicts of interest to disclose at this time?
None.
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 Item three, announcements. With respect to items not listed elsewhere in this agenda, the city commission may report on items of community interest, including announcing community events, announcing employee or community recognitions. Item three A, mayor's announcements. Mayor?
I know that there's probably some of the commissioners will talk about the stuff that happened over the weekend, lots of happening, lots of stuff happening here in Harlingen, but I did want to take an opportunity, I don't know if Gerald is here yet with the Boys and Girls Club, not here yet, well, he should be here shortly in a bit, but I had the opportunity last week to go over to the Boys and Girls Club to just kind of see what they were, what they were doing over there, and it was really nice to see all the kids hanging out, having a great time, and those of you that grew up here in Harlingen know that Gerald does such a wonderful job over at the Boys and Girls Club, and thanks to the generous sponsorships of our state of the city, we were able to raise $40,000 for the Boys and Girls Club so that they can put together a podcast room. And so you have kids, I got interviewed by some 12-year-olds, and they're doing great things over there, working on their leadership skills or public speaking, and it's really just a wonderful space for all of the kids here in the community, and it was nice to see that tangible, you know, return on the investment for those sponsors from our state of the city, and so looking forward to being able to do more in the community in the years to come. And that's, I think that's all I have for right now.
Okay. We're going to go to three B, city manager's announcements. Mr. Orsia?
None.
Okay, moving on to three C, city commission members' announcements.
Tomorrow at 10:30 Sergeant Salvador Carmona will be retiring after 25 years with the Harlingen Police Department. Sal, probably one of the most visible officers on the force in my lifetime here at Harlingen, motorcycle cop, the guy that inspects the safety seats for vehicles, the guy that does all the color guards, the guy that does all the ceremonies out at Veterans Park. He will truly be missed. Fine gentleman, fine police officer, fine Marine, simplify, Sal. I'll be there tomorrow.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Well, Commissioner Kinsley, thank you for the reminder. I appreciate that more than you realize, and for everybody that participated for the Heroes Walk Run, the 5K, it's appreciated as well. Thank you. I did, I did walk. I don't run. I did walk. Okay, so that was good. Appreciate you guys. Thank you.
None.
Okay, we're going to move on to item four, proclamation, presentation of awards. We have four A, the Harlingen Animal Shelter Pet of the Week.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commission. Tonight, making their way up to the front is Angie and Roberto. Roberto is about a year old. He's an Irish wolfhound mix. He has been at the shelter since August 28th, and so he has definitely been patiently waiting for his forever home and his forever people to come look for him. So he is available for adoption at the Harlingen Animal Shelter located at 1106 Markowski. Anybody interested in Roberto or any of his other friends there at the animal shelter are welcome to either go by or give them a call at 956-216-5250.
Awesome. Well, I got a chance to kind of look at him outside, enjoying his little walk outside. He seems very nice and calm and friendly. How old?
He's about a year old, and I did forget to mention, he, he's working on his commands, but so far he's got sit and he's working on the others.
He had the opportunity right now to sell it.
It's a work in progress, so, but he is patiently waiting.
Any events coming up for adoption? I know they were, this weekend, weren't they out at Pet?
PetSmart in Donna, and they, they were able to get three animals adopted. Zara got adopted from, was it PetSmart or did they go back to the shelter?
No.
So she got adopted at PetSmart, so it was, it was a great turnout, very visible. We had quite a few animals out there, and then this Saturday, y'all will be where?
I am hoping we're going to be at Moreno's if I'm not mistaken.
Moreno's Feed Store in West Lookout.
Wonderful. Okay, and so everyone can just follow the Harlingen Animal Shelter page for all of the updates, and hopefully Roberto, Roberto, right? Roberto here.
The rolling of those arms.
Robert. He's calling your name, yes. We'll find his forever home. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I was waiting for him to just sit.
Okay, we're going to move on to item four B, Mayor's Business of the Month. We have Stefano's Brooklyn Pizza.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. My name is Jason Moody, Director of Communications and Media. Mayor's Business of the Month, Stefano's Brooklyn Pizza. The Communications and Media Department has a small video presentation.
That was great. Short and sweet.
It was small.
Hello, I'm Christine Castillo. I am the manager here at Stefano's Brooklyn Pizza. Stefano's Brooklyn Pizza is an Italian slash pizza place here in Harlingen, Texas. Our specialties, chicken alfredos, spaghetti bolognese, chicken parmesan, of course, we have our delicious hand-tossed pizzas, wings, and special desserts. When Stefano's arrived here in Harlingen, we started off in the gas station just down the street from us. It was very popular, but however, it was very small. After a while, we started looking into property, which we came across the Lone Star, had an opportunity to buy it, we bought it, renovated it, and that's where Stefano's came into play. We are located at 4201 West Business 83 here in Harlingen. We accommodate everybody, and we treat everybody like family. We just look forward to having everybody's special occasion here at Stefano's.
Mayor, Steve Shahada is not available this evening, however, Christine Castillo, manager of Stefano's Brooklyn Pizza is here, if you want. She's, yes.
There she is. How are you doing today?
What do I say? I don't know.
So, you don't, you know, I guess you said it in the video, we just wanted to celebrate you, and I know you like live there. Every time I, you know, we head out there, we see you there, just always with a big smile on your face and, you know, welcoming all of the visitors, and not just in Harlingen, but throughout the region, and we're so fortunate to have Stefano's here in Harlingen. I think, I always tell people that Harlingen, that Stefano's represents resiliency, you know, so much that, that, you know, the family has gone through, and to come out on the other side even bigger and better, and just giving back to our community. We, everyone knows that whenever there's a need in our community, it's Steve that steps up immediately and says, how can we help this family? How can we help this other small business? How can we help, you know, the, the kids that have a football game for a pasta night? It's just really our partners in the community, so thank you so much for everything that y'all do. We are so grateful to have you in our community, and we would love to have a photo with you, and we have a little gift for you as well.
Thank you.
And if the commission can, I guess we're going to come right here.
Take a mangle shot.
Okay. Yeah, you need to be careful. Do not fall.
I understand. One more and three, two, one.
We got two more. Okay, we're going to move on to four C, proclamation, recognizing J and B's Cafe.
Good evening, once again. We have a certificate of recognition, recognition presented to J and B's Cafe, celebrating 10 years of community and culinary excellence. J and B's Cafe, located in the heart of downtown Harlingen, Texas, was founded by Beth and John Fuquay approximately 10 years ago, continuing a long tradition of beloved local eateries at the same location. The cafe's roots trace back through a legacy of Harlingen dining establishments, beginning with Simon's Sandwich and Yogurt Shop, followed by the Java Cafe, before becoming J and B's Cafe, honoring the rich culinary history of its predecessors by preserving and serving timeless favorites such as Simon's famous cowboy sandwich and the homemade soup from Terry's K Pasta Recipes, personally shared with Beth by the original owner, and blending the flavors of Harlingen's past with their own creative flair. The Fuquays have built a welcoming and nostalgic atmosphere where guests can enjoy both traditional and original dishes, surrounded by a pictorial history of the community they serve. J and B's Cafe proudly celebrated its 10th anniversary on October 12th, 2025, marking a decade of dedicated service, community spirit, and culinary excellence in the city of Harlingen, and due to their continued success and local impact, were recently recognized on Channel Five News made in the 956 segment, highlighting the Fuquay's commitment to preserving local flavor and supporting Harlingen's small business community. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city of Harlingen proudly recognizes J and B's Cafe for its 10 years of service, its celebration of Harlingen's culinary legacy, and its lasting contribution to the community's vibrant downtown, presented this 20th day of October 2025. And this, with us this evening, we do have Beth and John Fuquays.
Thank you all very much. This is a great honor. I was going to be mad if you weren't here. It's been a real joy for us. I've actually been downtown 26 years, 16 years with the flower shop, and then 10 years now, and my husband and I have been blessed with our fabulous crew. Without my crew, we wouldn't be who we are.
That's true.
And thank you very much.
Yes, thank you all very much.
Thank you for all you do, for all your delicious food and pies. We appreciate you so much. Your hard work, thank you.
I'm still just falling around.
You might get here, be careful.
Thank you.
Why don't you stand right here?
I don't know, Daniel, do you want to come over here?
Absolutely.
Would you stand right there?
I'm going to curve that gig.
I'm going to curve.
I'm going to go first.
Ready? One, two, three.
And three, two, one.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to four D, proclamation, claiming 80th anniversary for National Disability Employment Awareness.
Yes, our next proclamation, recognizing and commemorating the National Disability Employment Awareness Month, whereas October 2025 marks the 80th anniversary of National Disability Employment Awareness Month, and whereas this observance raises awareness about disability employment issues and celebrates the many contributions of individuals with disabilities, and whereas people with disabilities bring diverse skills and perspectives that enrich our workplaces and reinforce Harlingen's commitment to ensuring meaningful employment opportunities for all, and whereas we honor the efforts of employers, organizations, advocates, and individuals who work tirelessly to promote inclusion and accessibility in the workplace, and whereas workplaces that welcome the talents of all individuals are vital to building an inclusive community and a strong local economy, and whereas during this month, we reaffirm our commitment to promoting disability employment awareness and expanding opportunities for residents with disabilities. Now therefore, I, Norma Sepúveda, Mayor of the City of Harlingen, Texas, and on behalf of the city commission, do hereby recognize the month of October 2025 as National Disability Employment Awareness Month, and encourage the citizens of Harlingen to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of persons with disabilities to our workforce, community, and community. Today with us this evening, we have Mary, Maria Russet, with Cameron Work for Solutions, and Ricardo Rendon with the Texas Workforce Solutions.
We also have Abati Lorena Vega representing VR as well. Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. As mentioned, we're representing Texas Workforce Vocational Rehab Program, and over a century of service, we have had a simple mission of supporting individuals with disabilities to obtain, retain, and advance in meaningful employment. We just wrapped up our fiscal year, and our local team here in Harlingen contributed to our statewide outcome, so getting over 10,000 Texans into the workforce. So our agency has been very intentional and comprehend, providing comprehensive services to support individuals, and to us, disability is part of the natural human condition. If you weren't born with a condition, you're bound to acquire something throughout life. It's just part, it's the natural part. So all of us, this month of October, as National Disability Employment Awareness Month, is a call to action for all of us, that we all play a role in making our community, our workplaces, our society more inclusive and accessible to all, whether it's through our communication, through access, or whatever it is. We're always seeking opportunities to ensure that our talented individuals that we serve have a direct pipeline to, to contribute to our workforce, because everyone has talents and abilities, and we want to ensure that this untapped pool of individuals have equal access. So we appreciate your, your advocacy to joining us in this effort, and we welcome the opportunity to continue this conversation with anyone here present, right? All of us here, we, we provide more awareness, disability awarenesses, and also services to anyone here that may benefit from the opportunity to, to be more successful in their jobs, even though they have a medical condition. So I don't know if there's any other comments from here for y'all? We do have an invitation, we have an event coming up.
First of all, I want to thank the commission, the mayor, for allowing us this brief time, and I know that this is a wonderful community. I, I see the wonderful support for businesses, which really raises my heart, that you support these businesses, you, you bring them to the front. You also support pets. I like that. And you also support the, the children. I notice how much you race for the Boys and Girls Club. It's wonderful, so I know that this is a wonderful community, and I'm glad that you're providing us this opportunity to let you know about the events that we have for persons with disabilities. We are having an event, but it's going to be in Brownsville. It is available to all businesses throughout the county. If you're interested in attending, it's on our webpage, it's on Facebook, and you can download the app and, and if you wish to attend. But I do want to say to Harlingen, you're doing a great job in supporting the citizens. Thank you.
Yes, we'd love to take a photo with you, and thank you all.
and we welcome the opportunity to continue this conversation with anyone here present, right? All of us here, we provide more awareness disability awarenesses and also services to anyone here that may benefit from the opportunity to be more successful in their jobs, even though they have a medical condition. So, I don't know if there's any other comments from here? We do have an invitation, we have an event coming up?
First of all, I want to thank the Commission, the Mayor, for allowing us this brief time, and I know that this is a wonderful community. I see the wonderful support for businesses, which really raises my heart, that you support these businesses, you bring them to the front. You also support pets, I like that, and you also support the children. I notice how much you raise for the Boys and Girls Club, it's wonderful. So, I know that this is a wonderful community, and I'm glad that you're providing us this opportunity to let you know about the events that we have for persons with disabilities. We are having an event, but it's gonna be in Brownsville. It is available to all businesses throughout the county. If you're interested in attending, it's on our webpage, it's on Facebook, and you can download the app if you wish to attend. But I do want to say to Harlingen, you're doing a great job in supporting the citizens. Thank you.
Yes, we'd love to take a photo with you, and thank you all, all of you, for your hard work, and it is with partnerships that we're able to do the work that we do. Thank you, I need those opportunities, I think sometimes, you know, individuals I'm sure you know what we do, but I feel like we're more than enough. We do work with like youth in our schools, that's another part that you didn't mention, but we hope for being able to get in our local high schools, get prepared for employment, or even for secondary education. We appreciate you so much, I don't know how, this is not our regular venue, so where do you want? Oh wait, so Norma still brought us?
She's so cute.
She's such a sweetheart.
Mayor, we're gonna go ahead and move on to item five, which is citizens communication. At this time, the public is invited to address the City Commission and speak on any matter not specifically listed for public hearing elsewhere in this agenda. Please note that the City Commission members may not respond to comments or deliberate on topics addressed. Today, we have quite a bit of citizen communication, so we're gonna start with Fabian Alonso, Fabian Alonso.
Hello, my name is Fabian Alonso, I live in Cottonwood Community, and the reason I'm coming here tonight is not to complain, I just want to ask if it's possible. They resurfaced the street in Ed Carey about maybe six or seven months ago. I thought maybe it's going to be down the surface more smooth, and the way right now is, is very, very noisy. And I just did myself a little diagram, so I suggest that maybe do some, if maybe we have problems with money, just do a little part where it's not, it's not going to be so, you know, so terrible, because it's really, the surface is not finished. If you're going to the other side of the freeway, and Ed Carey by low, I'm talking about from Home Depot down, it's awful. The other side is clean and nice and smooth, but the section where I live, you cannot be outside, and we live very close to the main street, Ed Carey. And I suggest this, maybe we can do maybe like a one mile, where it's only, you know, community houses, and the other section by the Valley Green, where the green house, there's no houses, so there's no point to do anything over there, but when you are living with this kind of noise, it's awful. So, I just make this suggestion, if it can be done, I really appreciate.
Can I have that? Thank you.
Do you know how to do the middle one, from this section to down? This house is only in here, and here, and if you go over here, and here is beautiful, I mean, the streets are smooth.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate you for coming, thank you. Next, we have Hector Fuentes.
This item I'm gonna talk about is already in the agenda, so do I continue or do I wait?
Yes, just for those, and I see that there is quite a few of you here that are here for a specific item, so welcome, we appreciate you all making the time to be here. You have signed up for public comment, so even though it is on the agenda, you'll speak at the public comment section, since there's no public hearing attached to it. You have three minutes to speak, and then you're welcome to stay and want to hear what happens on the agenda item. But you can start by stating your name and where you reside.
My name is Hector Fuentes, I'm here in, under the ordinances of, there's A, B, C, and I'm looking at D, the consideration of possible action to approve of awareness to the City of Harlingen Code of ordinances to allow one instead of two required entrances to the proposed Horseshoe Point subdivision, and that's by Morris Road. My concern is a safety concern in that area. If we have only one entrance, my concern is that it's already a high volume of traffic, especially in the morning. So, is my understanding, there's about three hundred and ninety homes that are projected to go up, and if we have only one entrance to that area, I just can't visualize how we're gonna have three hundred and ninety, and usually in a household, there's two vehicles in a household. Can you imagine all that traffic going in and out of that area? Then especially in the morning, when we have a high volume of traffic with school, with work, and I just can't see, visualize, there's a safety factor involved in there, and that's my concern. My concern that there's going to be just too much volume of traffic for that given area. My second concern is the water drainage that already exists in that area. It doesn't properly drain out, especially when we have measurable rainfalls. I have seen that area flooded just recently, when we had the twenty-one inches that wrote, that is there in the White Oak Street, right across of the property. It flooded, I don't know how many homes in that area. If we have these many homes going up, and pavements going up, where is this water going to be directed to? That's my concern, as it is, the drainage there, we have ditches, so the water is aimed to go down there, because it has a slant going down, but it doesn't drain, in my property, it doesn't, it takes a long time to drain out, it takes a few days, because when it's flooded, it doesn't allow for the drainage to properly work with gravity. So, my concern is, where is this water gonna be directed? So those are my two issues of safety, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes. Okay, we're gonna move on to Mr. Raymond Reyes.
Raymond Reyes, seven zero six Land Ticket Drive. So, a couple things, so we have the elections, I already voted, you know, I was on top of it, dragged my wife out there, she voted too. So, you know, I know that, you know, it's just very interesting, I got this flyer, and to me, it's just like, it was a propaganda flyer. You know, there were certain instances for somebody else that was elected last time around, or was up for election, and there was all kinds of stuff about questionable actions with a business, and business with the city. Now, you know, everybody has a past, I know, I had a very good past, of course, some people would differ, but, you know, we can't, to me, it says two different things, that the opposing party, or the opposing individual, is worried that the other individual's already ahead of the game.
Yeah, excuse me, this is public comments for matters of public city business, we can't be talking about elections.
No, okay, another, okay, well, let me go into another direction. So, on another note, there's certain things that came to my attention. Individuals reached out to me in regards to certain things at the airport, and brought me certain things that I was very surprised to be reading. So much so, that I reached out to certain individuals that I have dealt with before in the past. I hope we can talk about that. And I'm actually gonna be leasing some of my commercial properties, so I told the previous administration, when that happens, I would be concerned, because now I'm gonna have a lot of time to look at a lot of different things, and for me, money is a tool. You're talking to somebody who, like, a good friend of mine who owns a business on the other side of the valley, you know, we're veterans, we're knuckleheads. So, I use money as a tool, I'm gonna spend whatever resources I have to look into everything that's been brought to my attention, and make sure it's addressed. So, if somebody's not doing things correctly, you know, who am I to deny you if you get what you earned? So, the citizens elected, individuals, for a reason, they need to do the right things for the right things, not for certain groups or certain circles. I didn't find foreign lands and pick up pieces of my body, of my friends, that were left, so I could come back and be dealing with that nonsense. As a veteran, I took an oath, I take it very seriously, and I know some individuals on this commission are veterans as well, or professionals that take oaths. We have to make true and honor that oath, if not, don't be in that business. Do something else, because you will, it is gonna catch up. It's not a promise, it's a guarantee, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Okay, we're gonna have next Kate Holt, she'll be speaking for a group of people.
Okay. Thank you. Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Kate Holt, and I'm a twenty-plus-year resident of Waters Edge subdivision. I have never felt the need to speak up in a public meeting before, but the situation with the agenda item ten D, the Horseshoe Point project, needs to be addressed. I want to say I support growth and progress and growth, and we all do, but it must be done responsibly and in accordance with our city ordinances to ensure Harlingen remains safe and enjoyable place to live, work, and raise our families. I want to thank Anna Hernandez for responding to the email I sent and addressing some of my concerns. That said, I still believe this project runs contrary to the expectations that many of us had when we moved into this area. And one of the frustrations we have had is that the adjoining neighbors within the two hundred feet from this proposed development were never notified of it. Of the people I've talked to, whose properties literally back up against this project area, none of them have received any formal notifications. My biggest concern is the proposed density of the three hundred and ninety homes. According to the information I received, the lot sizes will range from around twenty-three hundred square feet to ten thousand two hundred square feet, and with frontages between forty-six and eighty-five feet. While some of these lots will meet city standards, many or most do not, and that scale of development would significantly change the character and balance of our community. With lot sizes that small, on-street parking will become the norm. Once cars line both sides of the street, only one car can drive down the street at a time. This creates a safety issue for the residents and a serious challenges for emergency vehicles such as fire trucks. There's also the issue of access. With over two hundred and eighty homes located behind a single choke point, widening the road there may help, but having only one entry and exit simply isn't safe. The two proposed exits on Morris Road are only two hundred feet apart, and when the requirement is fifteen hundred feet, and the potential third connection depends on a property that is tied up in court system. Relying on a possibility like that isn't sound planning, and it poses unnecessary risk that I believe is not in the public's best interest. Drainage is another major concern. Our neighborhood, Waters Edge, flooded during Hurricane Dolly in two thousand eight, and again this past March. There is a proposed new drainage connection that appears to feed into our reservoir from upstream, which would increase the amount of water flow through our area during heavy rains. This needs much closer evaluation. While this project represents potential growth, it raises important concerns regarding density, infrastructure, traffic flow, and drainage. Before moving forward, I strongly urge the city to conduct comprehensive studies to understand the long-term effects this development will have on traffic patterns, emergency access, flood control, property values, and overall quality of life for both new and existing residents. And thank you for your time and allowing me the opportunity to share these concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Holt. Okay, we're gonna go on to Diana Padilla.
Diana Padilla, one nine seven four one Morris Road, Harlingen, Texas. I'm becoming a fixture on your meetings, but I do want you to realize that, in my case, I'm up here, not for the subdivision or for the street, although it's concerning to me that who's going to pay for the expansion of that Morris Road, because it is, it does have a lot of traffic. And to have that kind of traffic coming from a small street, you're gonna have a lot of problems on Morris Road. So, that affects people that have not even been told about the subdivision, so it's not just the people that are in Waters Edge. And then, there was a photo given to me of future expansion on the ditch. I think they need to have some retention ponds to slow the water down, and if that would have happened with our property, we wouldn't have that problem, the problem we have right now, because the water is going to flow behind some of the houses, and the people don't even know it. They have no idea, I've contacted them, they do not know it. If this design for the subdivision happens, and the ditch goes behind their home, it also goes behind our property, and is going to take more land from our property, which is unnecessary if they don't do a retention pond. The ordinance of Harlingen are made for a purpose. If you do a variance for roads, a variance for size, a variance for not putting a retention pond, and you're giving all this variance for the person that wants to put the subdivision without asking the neighbors or finding out how it affects the neighbors, or takes away from the neighbors, is unfair. So, I think it has to be looked at deeper, because these variances that are being done in increments, they affect as a whole, not in increments, but as a whole. I am definitely gonna be affected, because I have a ditch on my other side of my property that's twenty feet, and according to the photo, they want to go a hundred, so they're talking about a lot of land that they haven't even compensated us for the first one. So, you know, we pay taxes too, we live here too, we have rights too. So, I think, look at the whole picture, and make a decision based on the whole picture, and on other people that live in the vicinity of the subdivision.
Thank you, Ms. Padilla. Next, we have Alice Uri Basara.
Hi, my mom kept, because that's my most important job, but... Hello, Mayor and City Commissioners, thank you for your time today. My name is Alice Uri Basara, I'm a family nurse practitioner. I live on fourteen oh six White Oak in Harlingen. And Mayor, I'd like to start with thanking you today for your comments while you were at the Committee on Natural Resources in regards to the House bill to advocate for more drainage funding. I know that, you know, took your time and personal commitment to that, and I just want to acknowledge that what you do for the community does not go unnoticed, and us on White Oak acknowledge that. Thank you for the opportunity to share my concerns today regarding the proposed Horseshoe Point subdivision located in the three-point-five ETJ on the south side of Morris Road. So, I live on Morris Road, I was here back in March when we had that really bad flooding. Most of the properties have been restored for the most part, we moved back in in July, at the end of July. I just want to show, these are from your agenda meeting notes, so I printed it out. Let me find my street, because it's really close to the proposed entrance, okay? It's hard to see, but this is White Oak, and this is the proposed entrance area. It's just catty corner to our street. All right. So, this subdivision that is currently being planned with a single entrance with approval of the variance to the city code, it's a single entrance that would connect three ninety homes directly to Morris Road, in a very close proximity to White Oak. As a resident of White Oak, I would like to highlight how this design poses safety and welfare risk to existing Morris Road residents and White Oak residents, including myself. Want to start off with the traffic overload concerns, I know a couple people have touched on this, but Morris Road is currently a residential street, it's not designed to handle increased traffic volume. handle increased traffic volume from a full subdivision. In addition, there's Allison Estates that there is developing right down the street from us, so, you know, with all the flooding that we had back in March, we have, that is like, number-one top concern for a lot of us on White Oak, is how this new subdivision across the street is going to affect us. Single access point means all subdivision residents, including visitors, service vehicles, and emergency responders, will funnel through that one location. This will lead to increased congestion, especially during peak hours like morning, evenings, increasing emergency response time to neighboring streets like mine. Morris Road has limited pedestrian infrastructure, there's no sidewalks, there's no traffic lights, there's no markings on the street, there's hardly any lighting on that road. Increased vehicle traffic heightens danger to walkers, children, and cyclists who currently use the street. With only one access road, Morris Road becomes a thoroughfare, not a neighborhood. Residents like myself will experience increased noise, air pollution, and general disturbance. This diminishes the character and livability of Morris Road, violating the spirit of responsible and balanced growth. Morris Road and nearby areas already experienced stormwater drainage issues, especially during heavy rainfall, we saw that back in March. Adding a large subdivision of three-hundred-and-ninety homes without sufficient planning for water runoff will result in higher volumes of runoff. That runoff, we saw flowed like, directly from that land to our street. I mean, I remember coming here back in March, telling y'all, it was like a waterfall down to our side of the street. Potential property damage to existing homes for the erosion of yards, infrastructure, and already overpopulating the issue that we've got, we don't wanna propagate more problems, you know, we wanna...
Oh, that's, okay. That's okay, thank, that, thank you, Ms. Bessetta, I'm happy to chat with you after if you wanna hang out.
Thank you so much for your time, appreciate it.
We're gonna go ahead and move on to their next citizen, is Thomas Hushen.
Thank you, commissioners, mayor, my name is Tom Hushen, I reside at twenty-three-twenty-one Hacienda Road, Harlingen, Texas, also talking about ten D. Morris Road is a two-lane road, and we already have a population of a new subdivision which is opening up at the end of Morris Road with, I believe, two-hundred homes. We have a hospital, prison hospital that is being built that is gonna increase traffic. We also have a school that is on Rangerville Road that uses Ranger, or Morris Road as a cutoff to get back to Ed Carey. When you look at adding another three-hundred-and-eighty homes in an area that only has one means of egress, you're asking for a lot of trouble. In the county area, I have personally seen this in subdivisions, I've seen it where there's only one entrance, and the amount of problems that it has is tremendous. Now, this is not even within the city yet, and you do plan on annexing it, and so when you do annex it, you're going to annex all those problems that are gonna come with that. You need to look at that. You need to be able to say, we have to have two means of egress. Now, I know Oak only has one, but Oak doesn't have three-hundred-and-eighty-six homes within it. It has a small group of homes. Hacienda Road is the same thing, we only have about ten homes, we don't have hundreds of homes all trying to funnel in. We have school buses in there, and we do have a lot of joggers and a lot of bicyclists that go through there. Currently, it is very dangerous, even as we speak, and those of you who have been through that neighborhood understand how dark it is, and we've seen cars going through there at fifty, sixty miles an hour during the nighttime when there's nobody out there, because it is partly owned by the county as well as by the city. Eventually, if the city does get all that property, now you're gonna have the same situation you had when you built Kano School, and the road was too small to handle that much traffic, and you had to go through years and years to be able to expand, expand that road to be able to accommodate the traffic. You're gonna be going through the same thing here, when you start to build that at three-hundred-and-sixty-eight homes. That's not even talking about, I know they're gonna have knockouts, they're gonna have ways to get emergency vehicles within that area, but once you start increasing that traffic along with those cars parking, you're not going to have as much room as you think you are to be able to turn ladder trucks around, to be able to bring ambulances in as well, because you're only gonna have one entry point, and when those cars are parked up, you're not gonna be able to pass them. So, I hope that you deny that variance, because once you accept a variance for three-hundred-and-sixty-eight homes with one means of egress, what's gonna stop the next developer to come in here and say, you just gave them three-hundred-and-sixty-five homes with one entrance on a small road, and you're gonna deny me? Once you start giving variances, you're gonna have that slippery slope that you're gonna have to go through. Thank you very much, commissioners.
Thank you, Tom, we appreciate you coming.
Okay, we're gonna move on to, I hope I say it right, Usman Sharif. Is he here?
Mr. Sharif?
Yeah.
Is he in the restroom?
I don't know.
Okay, let's come back.
Okay, we're gonna move on to Ronaldo Lozano.
You know, we're here on a Monday again, and I don't think that's for the benefit of children of Harlingen. And there's also a mention that there's no public hearing. Well, perhaps for one person on the day, yes, there isn't, but according to the agenda that the city secretary had the gumption to put out, it does counter what the mayor says. But she won't counter her by her official title, because this touting of transparency and fair play, it's not in vogue. Look even at your announcements today. Last week, there were reports, because you don't wanna follow the spirit of the law. You guys are a law unto yourselves right now, following one person's lead. She has the law in her hands, but she understands it, but she is only seeking one answer for whatever the mayor tells her to do, that's what she's gonna do. The podcasts of children yet again, yes, maybe Daryl was able to have one before prior restraint, or better yet, in layman's jargon, oppression. The kind of oppression that we had here this summer by the one person that I thought was not, had some honor, there was mention of an oath that was taken, it was horrific. So, as I mentioned last time, the reason the last person that spoke eloquently, you all follow policies for about a month or two, you test the winds, and you guys can do a hundred-and-eighty-degree flip if you're told so by the mayor. Horrific conspiracies are occurring, and I wait for the day, not to be as pleasant as the lady that lives in White Oaks, but to suggest that the truth is gonna overwhelm you one day. You're not gonna be able to withstand the wave of truth that's gonna hit you, Mr. Pulvita. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lozano.
Okay, next, we have Robert Lefwitch.
Robert Lefwitch, nine-oh-nine East Parkwood, I just wanted to come, after seeing the Valley Morning Star article about the airport situation, the fiasco that's going on out there, and the mention of the nepotism that's, or nepotistic practice that's occurred at the waterworks, I just wanted to come, because I brought this up back in July, and I didn't get to finish reading some of the things that are detrimental to nepotistic practices. One of the other things that we see is the damage, the organizational reputation. Public knowledge of nepotistic practices can tarnish an organization's reputation, making it harder to attract skilled professionals. It could also potentially impact relationships with clients, and I think that's with other cities, we do business with Combs and Santa Rosa, and now I understand that they're having some issues. Investors and partners who may see such practices as indicative of poor management or ethical standards. And the reason why I wanna bring this up is because, yes, it may be legal per the local government code, or it may be legal per the charter, but we have an ethics ordinance, and that standard of conduct under that ethics ordinance reads as the following, it says, "In order to more fully establish and implement the policy and the ethics code, to ensure that all city officials act and conduct themselves both inside and outside, the city services to give no occasion of distrust of their integrity, and to avoid even the appearance, appearance of impropriety by any city official." The following is what it is, so, yeah, we have an ethics ordinance, and it goes above and beyond local government code. It says if there's an appearance, if your husband's uncle is making, let me just throw some not-so-fun facts out there, a hundred thousand dollars more than the last executive director, and the post for that job was not two-hundred-and-forty thousand. Had it been two-hundred-and-forty thousand, maybe we would've gotten more applicants for that job, but it wasn't. But because we're here lately, there's either favoritism or special interest, you know, it's gonna be interesting to find out if there's any favoritism in this, in this one or two egress situation that comes up. But the fact of the matter is that you guys came out of executive, went into executive session last week, or the last meeting, and you violated Toma, Texas Open Meetings Act. When y'all approved out of executive session the funding to offer to the airport to go out for a hiring company, that should've been explained in the agenda. That is not an executive session item, the language was not transparent.
Thank you, Mr. Lefwitch.
Okay, last, we have Lillian Kim. Ms. Lillian Kim? She's not here.
Do we have Usman Sharif?
He left, mayor.
He did leave?
Okay.
All right, is there anything else?
No, Ms. Mad, it's, for instance, communication. So, we're gonna move on to item six, approval of minutes of the regular meeting of July second, twenty-twenty-five.
Motion to approve the minutes? Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, item seven is consent agenda. No discussion is anticipated on any of the items in this section, because they are routine business, were included in the budget adoption process, or have been previously discussed as a staff report to discussion item. These items will be considered collectively by a single vote unless a commission member requests an item be removed from the consent agenda.
Do we have any items that need to be removed?
Seven A.
Any other items? Can I get a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda, except for item A?
Motion, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, item seven A reads, "Consideration and possible action to approve a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant to the office of the governor for the S H S P N U A S I Supporting Border Crisis Response and Enforcement Projects."
On this one, Anna, just...
Before you ask the question, so this is actually an application that we will not be submitting.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
All right.
So, a motion to deny seven A.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay. We're gonna move on to item eight, "Staff Reports and Other Discussion Items. Items in this section are not expected to require action by the city commission and are generally for information only. However, any item listed in this section may become an action item at a future meeting with the request of the mayor or after the request of any two commission members or the city manager." Right now, we're, item eight A, City Manager's Report, we don't have anything, Mr. Garcia?
No.
No? Okay, for item eight B, Staff Reports, we do have presentation and possible discussion by Orlando Campos on the Harlingen Economic Development Corporation final report for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five annual work plan.
Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the city commission, I'm Orlando Campos, CEO of the Harlingen Economic Development Corporation. I provided in your packages the overview of the final report of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five annual work plan that was adopted early last fiscal year, and so I'm here to answer any questions that you might have, but I wanted to highlight some of the items that were achieved this past year by the Harlingen Economic Development Corporation. So, you'll indulge me, I'll go through some of these slides that I've provided in your packages. The mission of the Harlingen Economic Development Corporation is to improve the quality of life of the citizens of Harlingen through the creation of wealth, jobs, and investment. And so, everything that we do is focused on achieving this mission. All of you, our organization is governed by a seven-member board of directors that was appointed by each and every one of you. This past month, we welcomed a new member, who is Javier Segura, and we said goodbye to a longtime board member, Eric Zehi, whose term had expired. Our board of directors represent a good cross-section of the business community, are very passionate about economic development here in Harlingen, and provide quite a bit of direction to the staff. So, in terms of the staff, we do have seven members that actively participate on a daily basis in helping to deliver the goals of the work plan that were achieved last year. Our work plan is, the basis of our work plan is the strategic plan that was approved by our board as well as all of you about two years ago, shortly after I arrived to take helm of the organization. So, there were six goals that were developed and approved by the strategic plan, and since then, we've worked hard to ensure that we deliver on the goals that were approved. Not going to go into quite a bit of detail, but just touch on some of the highlights of the, what we've been able to achieve this past year related to our work plan. Goal number one called for the development of an aggressive business attraction and retention strategy. Goal number one focuses in on helping to market the community, helping to attract new businesses to the area, to Harlingen, and also focuses in on business retention and expansion efforts, as well as focusing in on promoting the community, both domestically as well as internationally, specifically into Mexico. This past year, we have attended twelve trade shows here in the US and Mexico to help promote the community. A result of that was a hundred-and-forty-five trade show leads that expressed an interest in the community, that we have been working on following up and helping to promote the community for their investment and job creation here in Harlingen. In addition to that, we get quite a number of RFPs from the governor's office for economic development. These are businesses that are interested in making an investment, either expanding or relocating to the state of Texas, and if we meet all the criteria of what the company is looking for, then we're encouraged to submit proposals for Harlingen to the governor's office. So, this past year, we submitted thirty corporate relocation proposals. Part of our business retention and expansion efforts, we conducted eighty-eight local company visits, who collectively employ close to seven thousand people here within Harlingen. So, we definitely have been out knocking on doors and meeting on local businesses to ensure that we get feedback from them, to help strengthen our economic development efforts. We also have a number of small business grants that we support through our organization. One of them is the Revitalize Harlingen Grad Program, which is a facade enhancement program. This past year, we supported a local businesses with thirty-eight thousand dollars, but they invested four-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand dollars here in the community to improve their places of business. This past year, we also launched the Equip Harlingen Grant Program, we awarded two businesses with six thousand dollars to help them purchase new equipment that would help expand their business. But one of the programs that we were very proud of that we launched this past year was the Harlingen Strong Grant Program. This program speaks of the economic resiliency of the community. All of you will recall the floods that occurred in late March, that negatively impacted the business community as well as many residents. All of you came together, along with our board, just a few days after the floods, and approved this grant program, which helped support a hundred-and-seven small businesses with over three-hundred-and-twelve thousand dollars to help provide support to their cleanup efforts and to get them back in business as soon as possible. In addition to that, we also have helped support entrepreneurs and small businesses with various programs. We have a loan fund with People Fund, we also host... Uh, we also hosted two Let's Get Down to Business, uh, events where we partner up with various city departments that help provide, uh, input on what businesses need to be aware of as they're opening their businesses. And as a matter of fact, we've got the next, uh, Let's Get Down to Business scheduled for this Saturday, October 25th, from, uh, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Harlingen Convention Center. So if anyone is interested in opening a business, wants to learn a little bit more about the process, we encourage them to, uh, join us, uh, at this, uh, event. So overall, as part of our, our business attraction, business retention, uh, strategy, we have closed 10 projects generating over 453 new and retained jobs here in the community that will make a $15 million investment, uh, and generate sec- sales tax revenue of 1.3 million dollars. One thing that we're more proud of is, uh, are the projects that we have in the pipeline. Right now, we are managing 12 active projects that are, uh, focusing in on Harlingen that would create a capital, capital investment of 5.9 billion, uh, dollars for the, uh, the community. This translates to new investment, new jobs that would be brought, uh, to, uh, Harlingen. Of course, none of, none of this is possible without helping to, uh, support, uh, and elevate our local workforce through, uh, skilled developments. And the, uh, this slide, you see all the various programs that we have helped support. Uh, but we have invested close to 300,000 jo- $300,000 for job training with, uh, TSTC, uh, Vida, as well as TSC to help upscale, um, young professionals and individuals that, uh, would be, uh, qualified for high-paying, high-demand jobs here in the community. We have also worked very closely with Workforce Solutions of Cameron County and have co-hosted seven different job fairs, uh, in the community. Creating our own business seedlings, uh, and supporting entrepreneurs is also something that's very important. Goal number three is to create an entrepreneurship, uh, innovation hub. This past year, we established a subcommittee to focus in on the strategy and need for an innovation hub. And I encourage any of you that are interested in participating with, in our efforts, uh, to let us know. We'd be more than happy to, uh, invite you to, uh, our meetings. But along the way, we have continued to support and, uh, improve the longevity of small, um, businesses and entrepreneurs through the sponsorship of scholarships for them to attend the Kaufman Foundation Fast Track Program with UTRGV, as well as the Accelerator Program with, uh, UTRGV. This past year, we also launched the very first, uh, Rise Up Harlingen Pitch Competition, where three businesses were awarded $65,000 in funding to help scale and grow their businesses, uh, as well. One of the things that I also forgot to mention, uh, related to, uh, the entrepreneurship, uh, or goal number three, is that we also met with 115 entrepreneurs and small businesses that have been in operation for less than five years and have less than 10 employees. We certainly want them to be successful here in the community. So we've taken the proactive effort of reaching out to them to see how we can help support, uh, their efforts. Now, goal number four, that was also approved as part of our strategic plan, was helping to support infrastructure for local, uh, industry. There are many undeveloped sites here within Harlingen that are ripe for commercial and industrial development, but may lack the, uh, uh, infrastructure that is needed. So that is where we can step in to help address that need, to help open these properties for, uh, new investment. We've, um, a few years ago, received a grant from the Economic Development Administration for 1.6 million dollars for the construction of, uh, detention pond at the industrial park at Roosevelt. Uh, we are nearing completion of that project, but we did not just want to build a detention pond, but we also wanted it to be an amenity for the neighborhood right next door. So this detention pond includes a hike and bike trail, uh, that circulates the detention pond. And it's also my understanding that it has already been used by the neighborhood residents who see it as a huge advantage, uh, for them. We've done a number of trips to Washington, D.C. with the RGV partnership and other local partners to help advocate for infrastructure here in the, uh, community. We've been working with, uh, AEP to learn a little bit more about the challenges related to power demands here in our region. And so we're advocating them, uh, to help, uh, bring in much more needed power to the area. And we also funded one project with $54,000 to help bring, uh, much-needed infrastructure to their property lines. Goal number five is to develop and execute a unified marketing program to elevate Harlingen locally, nationally, and internationally. Two years ago, we, uh, developed a new branding, uh, strategy for the organization, which included a new logo. This year, we developed new digital marketing ads with our, uh, ad agency, took a close look at our ad placement strategy, um, and launched a new program with new ads with the new branding. Um, and we doubled down on our efforts in, um, Mexico through, um, uh, social media advertising, targeting, uh, Monterey, Mexico. And we'll be looking at doing more of that in other communities, uh, here in the, uh, in, in, in the country of Mexico as well as, uh, other overseas, uh, countries. We've increased our social media followers by 1,600, and we've done numerous, uh, interviews uh, related to, uh, our efforts and what's going on here in Harlingen. And we see that as free advertising to help, uh, bring in more focus on the community. I think goal number six is elevating the organizational structure to be a model for economic development. Obviously, we want to stay on top of best practices, learn as much as we can of innovative, uh, techniques that other communities are using on how to help fund and how to attract new businesses to their own community. We also have state guidelines that we have to follow, uh, special training that our staff and our board of directors have to follow. And I'm happy to say that all of our board, uh, has received all the necessary training as well as the, uh, the staff. We also doubled down on our small business and startup, uh, efforts by hiring a specialist to focus on those, uh, small businesses. Um, she's the individual that has done over those 100-plus small business and, uh, uh, meetings, and also has met with a number of entrepreneurs. We currently have one position that is open. We lost one, uh, staff member who, uh, had a great opportunity that she couldn't miss out on. And so we certainly trained her well, and we hope that she benefits the city, uh, with, uh, what she's been able to achieve with our organization. So if there's anyone that's interested, the position is listed on the city's, uh, uh, career page. And this is for the Economic Development Coordinator, uh, position. So I'll open it up to any questions that you might have.
Yes, I just have two.
Sure.
We discussed that last year, we set the metrics by which we would judge this year.
Mm-hmm.
Did we meet all those metrics?
Yes, we did. The only one that we fell short on was on the, um, on the hub, uh, one, simply because just as we were getting started on that, that's when we had to launch the Revitalize Harlingen, um, not the Revitalize, the Harlingen Strong Grant Program. Um, and so we had to put many things on the back burner. However, that's one of the initiatives that's going to be brought to the forefront this year, uh, moving forward. So we'll definitely be moving forward with that.
Perfect. Speaking about that, uh, I know we had a survey done or, uh, an analysis done by UTRGV. They deemed that we were suitable to have this innovation slash, um, business incubator.
Yes.
What is the difference between what this board subcommittee is going to do and what we received in that report?
Yeah, well, they're going to evaluate, um, other innovation hubs or incubators that are here in the Rio Grande Valley.
Like the CDE Bridge?
Yes, in the Upper Valley, the Lower Valley, uh, as well. Take a closer look at that survey that was, uh, conducted. I want to make sure that, uh, if we move forward with an incubator, that it's done correctly, that we're not competing with other communities, that we do something differently, something that's specifically needed here within the, uh, community itself. The other thing that we will look at will be the, uh, the financing of such a, uh, an endeavor. Starting up an incubator, uh, will not be cheap. I've done that in a previous life. Uh, the recurring cost will have an impact on our budget, uh, as well. So I want to make sure that we do it right and that they are fully aware of the financial implications and investment that will be required.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions?
No, thank you. We appreciate you, um, and I'm sure that the community watching at home, this is, uh, great, great useful information. Thank you for providing in our packet in advance. Great job and keep doing what you're doing.
Yeah, I certainly want to thank all of you for all the support that you have given the, uh, organization. I look forward to working with all of you. And as I've mentioned before, our doors are open, not just to you, but anyone in the community that might be interested in learning a little bit more about what we're doing to help, uh, grow the, uh, local economy in Harlingen. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, we're going to move on to item nine, which is public hearings. At this time, the mayor will invite members of the public who have filled out the public hearing in the citizen communication form to address each item listed in this section. Please limit your comments to the topic of that public hearing. If more than one public hearing is being held, you will be allowed to speak during each topic, provided you have filled out the public hearing and citizen communication form for the appropriate topic. If you are signed up for two or more public hearings, you will be limited to five minutes for all topics. At this time, we don't have anybody signed up for public hearing.
Okay, we'll just go through this for the record. Item nine A, public hearing for a special use permit to allow a bar lounge in general retail district located at 323 West Jackson Avenue, Suite A, bearing illegal description of lots one through lot five, block 61, Harlingen original town site. This time, we'll open the public hearing on this item, having no one here to speak for or against the item. We will close the public hearing. Item nine B, public hearing for rezoning request from not designated district to general, uh, to general district for 6.08 acres, more or less out of the south part of block five Highland subdivision, located south of South Expressway 77, approximately 845.39 feet east of Maggie Lane. This time, we'll open the public hearing on this item, having no one here to speak for or against this item. We'll close the public hearing. Item nine C, public hearing for voluntary annexation and establishing the initial zoning upon an annexation to Light Industry District for 4.5 acres of Lot Five, Block One, Harlingen Industrial Park subdivision, number four, located north of Millennium Drive, approximately 688.85 feet east of FM 508. Having no one here to speak for or against this item, we will open and close this item.
Okay, item 10, it's action items. City commission will discuss, consider, and take any action deemed necessary on items listed in this section, including the adoption of a resolution or an ordinance. Item 10 A reads consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit to allow a bar slash lounge in a general retail district located at 323 West Jackson Avenue, Suite A, bearing illegal description of lots one through five, block 61, Harlingen original town site. Planning?
An ordinance permitting the code of ordinances, ordinance number 16-8 of the city of Harlingen, to issue a special use permit to Jane Mary Marquinez to allow a bar lounge in a general retail district located at 323 West Jackson Avenue, Suite A, bearing illegal description of lots one to five, block 61, Harlingen original town site.
Question, has this been a bar lounge before?
Yes.
Okay, and-
They're changing owners.
All the permits and everything's clean and kosher enough today?
Yes, that's actually one of the conditions to obtain the, uh, the specific use.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to accept.
Make a motion to accept with, uh, the, the conditions that y'all placed on it. If you don't mind, Commissioner Madam.
I don't mind.
Thank you, so I'll second his motion. We're just going to amend it to include the conditions staff recommended.
Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, item 10 B is consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading for rezoning request from non-designated district to general district for 6.08 acres, more or less out of south part of block five Highland subdivision, located south of South Expressway 77, approximately 845.39 feet east of Maggie Lane.
An ordinance permitting the code of ordinances of the city of Harlingen, rezoning from not designated end district to general retail GR district for 6.03 acres, more or less out of the south part of block five Highland subdivision, located south of South Expressway 77, approximately 845.39 feet east of Maggie Lane.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed, Commissioner Modales?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes.
Okay, item 10 C reads consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading for the voluntary annexation and to establish the initial zoning upon annexation to Light Industry District for 4.5 acres of Lot Five, Block One, Harlingen Industrial Park subdivision, number four, located north of Millennium Drive, approximately 688.85 feet east of FM 508.
An ordinance extending the corporate limits of the city of Harlingen by annexing for full purpose a 4.50 acre tract of land out of Lot Five, Block One, Harlingen Industrial Park, number four, located north of Millennium Drive, approximately 688.85 feet east of FM 509, and to establish the initial zoning of Light Industry, LI, district, binding the land to all of the acts, ordinances, resolutions, and the regulations of the city, providing for separability and providing an effective date.
Are there any questions?
Yes, one, Anna, excuse me, um, what's the time limit to get these, uh, services, fire protection, fire, water, street?
Well, technically, the service plan could be for 10 years, uh, in this case, because it's one lot and the, the property owner is already working on getting the services. He's going to get, he's going to work on getting the, uh, basically the water and wastewater on its own.
How soon? How soon?
How soon? I mean, as, you know, before he wants to operate or open his business, yes.
Thank you.
Any other, um, comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, item 10 D is consideration and possible action to approve a variance to the city of Harlingen code of ordinances to allow one instead of two required entrances for the proposed Horseshoe Point subdivision located in the 3.5 mile ETJ on the south side of Morris Road, approximately 2,095.97 feet southwest of South Ed Carey Drive.
Motion to remove it from the table.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I would like to suggest to leave this item table, so, because we, we heard a lot of, uh, a lot of concerns today. So I would suggest, uh, or at least ask Anna to, to do research, maybe come up with a traffic study to, maybe we can answer all those concerns.
And, and then I have a mark question. Uh, I'm in agreement that this stay tabled. We have, not in all my years here, have we had this much opposition to a project, and the people need to be heard. Is it possible for us to meet with Anna and the engineers and the developers in a public meeting just specifically for this, to, to hammer things out?
Commissioner, it would be up to the, the commission to call a special meeting.
Yeah.
It certainly could, as long as it complied with the Open Meetings Act.
Okay.
What we could do, um, Commissioner, and, um, thank you, Oscar, for, for that. I think that's, um, it's, uh, it, given everything that we've heard today, and I know we've had multiple conversations, um, with staff and, and, uh, I've, I know I've received, uh, several emails from, from folks. We appreciate you being engaged. I know that there's some concerns, want to make sure that, uh, everybody understands fully what, what is, um, being proposed. And I think that what Mike is recommending is a workshop. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
So, so that's-
You picked the vocabulary.
So that's something, um, potentially, then we can have staff to see if that's something that we can, we can work towards.
Because I'm all for hous- I'm all for housing, I'm all for progress, comma, but we need to hammer things out.
Okay, so, um, Commissioner Kinsley has withdrawn his motion to take it off the table, and it remains on the table. Um, and it's, uh, unless there's any discussion or if there's another motion for it to be taken off the table, please say so now.
I have a quick question. On this workshop, can the residents speak up and voice their concerns?
I don't see why not. We, we usually have a public comment, period, yeah. So is, um, there's no other motion, then we'll move on to the next item?
Okay, we're going to move on to item 10 E. Consideration and possible action to approve a contract with the Boys and Girls Club of Harlingen for fiscal year 2026 in the amount of $145,757 for team service programs and authorize the city manager to sign the contract.
Motion approved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries unanimously.
Okay, ten F is consideration and possible action to approve a contract with the Boys and Girls Club of Harlingen for fiscal year twenty twenty-six in the amount of one hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and four dollars for the youth service programs and authorize the city manager to sign the contract.
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries unanimously.
We're on the topic. I thought it was awesome y'all's event out there, the Boys and Girls Club. I look forward to hearing their podcast.
They are, they are twelve years old.
Oh, it's awesome. The photos look great.
It was, it was wonderful. We're going to invite them over to the city podcast and
They'll watch it. They'll take your job.
I know, I know.
Okay, we're going to move on to item ten G. Consideration and possible action to approve the proposed list of streets for the fiscal for the twenty twenty-six Streets Improvement Program project. Engineering?
Robert Hernandez, city engineer for the record. In accordance with the Code of Ordinance, chapter forty, article seven.
Do we have a better picture for the, is that what it's going to look like at home?
I think it's just the font.
Okay.
Or the quality of the PowerPoint.
Okay.
I can't see it from here.
Well, we have it in our
I know, but the public can't see it from here.
No.
The city of Harlingen administers a street improvement program, which is a plan to provide inspection, maintenance, repairs, reconstruction of the city streets. The program typically consists of milling, overlaying, or construction, or reconstruction of streets and repairing existing curb and gutter. The proposed streets are to be repaved in the upcoming fiscal year. They were selected based on a street assessment performed on, performed by Iwer Q in twenty twenty-two in which streets were assigned a score of zero to twenty for each street, which indicates the remaining service life of each street. Citizen's requests to the Public Works and Engineering Department were also considered in the street selection. Staff recommends approval of the twenty twenty-six SIP list of streets, which will be designed after commission provides approval and starts construction in early twenty twenty-six. After the design, we will go out for bids for the material, for the asphalt, caliche, oil. The construction will be done by Public Works and engineering staff will conduct the construction inspection and testing. Now, I will go, would you like me to go one by one from the street?
No, but I do want you, for those that are watching at home and for those that are here, can you explain how you decide on what streets get prioritized?
Yes, so there was a study done back in twenty twenty-two, which gave a service life. And that's how, last year was the first year, first cycle, we did the streets. So, we selected the ones that needed most help and we're just following that pattern. We also do get calls from citizens and requests. We'll look at it, go out there, do a drive, and essentially see what type of improvements we could do. On this list, you'll notice that, for the most part, most of them are residential streets. We're targeting right now the residential aspect. There are some collector streets, but those are around schools. Hopefully, down the line, we'll be moving up towards the bigger roads. But right now, we are targeting the residential component.
So, Robert, so advocacy from the community, data from
Our report, Iwer Q.
Especially, I would imagine, from our app, the app where people can put up, file any type of complaint or concern or just wanting a work order to be conducted. And so, that's taken into consideration. And then, of course, the advocacy from the commissioners going and driving through their districts and identifying. And then, would that be an accurate description of how you come about?
We made internally between engineering, Public Works, administration, look at the streets, the way we're recommending it, and then this is the list that made it to the restitution.
And this is like double than what we normally do, actually, a little bit more.
Yeah, so before, I did looked at the history. When we were bidding it out, we were paving between two and a half to four miles of pavement. Last year was our first time doing that in-house, we did seven point three miles. And this year, we're going a little bit above that, at ten point three miles. We did notice that we had a little bit over of monies on the, where we were pulling the monies from. So, we decided to be able to do more streets for this upcoming cycle.
Fantastic. So, I reviewed the recommendations and I'm sure that the commission, commissioners will jump here, jump in here in just a bit, but I do want to, I know that we had reviewed this before. We've gotten some complaints and just a focus on ensuring that we are, I know we're doing residential here, but I think that we need to add on Bob Uker Road. I know that y'all had gone out there and taken a look at how bad it is. And I know that if we want that growth on the east side of our airport for development, we need to ensure that you can get to the location. So, I think that that's important for us to, to consider on adding into our proposed plan. And I know that a lot of times, we have our state delegation or federal delegation and they come in, they visit through the airport, or you have potential investors and they're driving down that road and it's pretty rough. And so, if you can fit that in, I, I would really appreciate that.
I think we do have enough wiggle room. Initially, we were considering it from Grams Road to north of Old Rio, on the road, that's about fifty-nine hundred meter feet. Should be doable to include it, if that's an amendment you would like to do.
Okay.
Yeah, I support the inclusion of Bob Uker. And then I would like us to add Commerce Street from Fair Park to Wilson Road. I did talk to staff. We can do half of it, which would be, just for this year, the part that goes southbound. So, if you're coming from Wilson, you would cut south to Fair Park, just that portion.
Yes.
And then next year, I can advocate for us to do the north part.
Isn't there a project already for Commerce Road to begin with?
Yeah, but we don't know where the funding is going to come from that. We've been having big, the big grants. Like, I think it was the brick grant, that one dropped out. And so, that's the fear, is that we're going to wait. Plus, even if we were to get the money, it's going to take us like three years to get the bid, construct it, all that stuff. So, this will get us there, according to Oscar. This can hold us over the three years to get us to that point.
We were recommending spot repairs, essentially addressing the serious spot holes and the reconstruction where the subgrade has given. But we would for sure go out there if it's added and decide what's, whatever should be best repaired.
Yeah, because I agree that Commerce needs work done, because that's one of the streets that we see people complaining about on social media. So, I agree with that, but I just, I just want to make sure that we don't use, we're not using money that we're already going to get. But I understand Daniel's point to the fact that right now, with the state of our government, funding that we can normally, funding that we can normally count on doesn't always appear.
Correct. Yeah, because right now, for the, for the grant you're talking about, the race grant, we were looking at phase one and that was from the south limit going north. So, from seventy-seven up to Tyler Harrison. So, it wouldn't be necessary. We could still work on that.
So, we'll be able to fit that in, Tammy?
Yes.
I think that's important because we do, I mean, I think the, it's a major thoroughfare road and people travel through that and that is probably the number one complaint that I get in the community. I know that we had met with our state delegation and we talked to them about it and they were just surprised on that price tag to redo the entire Commerce. And I think that we need to work simultaneously towards it. But if we can do this, what did you call it?
Spot repairs.
Spot repairs. I think that'll give that, you know, our community a, just a little relief when, when they're driving through there. And then if we can look next year when we come back and we can do a little bit more and then the following year, a little bit more, and then obviously, working towards getting these, these grants, I think is going to be, is going to be helpful because, like Commissioner Pettit said, we did have all of these great plans moving forward and then the federal funding got, you know, stripped. And so, we have to pivot and see how we can continue with that progress. So, I think that's a, that's a good addition, if, of course, it's something that y'all can, can also
Correct, because we're still going to designate, go out for bids, make sure that we have the monies. We'll find it.
And for people to understand, when we're talking about that, we're talking about materials.
Correct.
Because we are saving cost on labor, because now we've got that crew that's doing it in-house.
Labor and equipment, significantly.
So, this is the reason why we're able to do more with, with less.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is Grant and Jay Street still on the, this, this, is this is for twenty twenty-six?
Correct.
All right, so for twenty twenty-five, you still have Grant and Jay on the agenda for this coming year?
Yes, those are still programmed. They will still be paved. We're looking to be completed towards the end of this year. We started a bit late on, on the paving operations. We started in April, late April. But all the streets that were previously approved on the last cycle are still going to be paved before any of these get started.
Because in looking at the numbers here, my district is shorted by half a mile. Is there a reason behind it? As far as lean your feet, we're looking at two thousand six hundred ninety-three that's being shorted. I'm not just comparing that to the average.
We, an exact answer right now, no. The way I just, like I said, I used a lot of the report feedback that I got from citizens and others to look at what streets I could add from each district, because I was trying to separate it. But I try to stay near the two-mile range. Is there any other street you would like to add right now?
I tell you what, you and I can drive it. I'll point them out to you.
Yeah, because I know we just finished that Colorado and Liberty drainage improvements. So, we made, I made sure that that section was repaved there.
Okay.
Yeah, at Colorado.
Let's hit some time.
Yes, sir.
What, Commissioner Morales, because of the, the item that was on ten D, because of the, the development that you have there going in on the corner of Louisiana and Morris, you may consider having staff start looking at a major expansion of Morris Road. Because you've, you hit it last time, Commissioner Morales, and the citizens said it this time, is that that road is going to get more and more usage, even presuming that ten D does not proceed forward. Just already, you're going to get it, so you may consider that.
Yes.
Yeah, that's a divider.
And we may, you know, and I would support Commissioner Morales, if you wanted to, to accept that whole road from the county, because eventually, we're going to annex, you know, people are going to want to move into the city. We'll take it over that road anyways. And I grew up on that road and that was, it was a nightmare to try to get it paved because, you know, past administrations didn't want to do it. But if you wanted to go that route, Commissioner, I'd support it.
I don't have an issue with that. If we can get the county to do it.
Yeah. Do you want us to start looking at that?
Yes, please.
Is there a motion to have the county do all of our roads? Do we have the authority to do that? Don't tell the judge.
I'll tell them in the morning.
So that, yeah, if we can start on that one, Robert, the process of seeing if the county would let us annex that whole road.
I'm pretty sure they'll gladly give it away, because then we're going to be responsible.
Morris Road would need to be at least three lanes. You know, with the turning lane in the middle and
If not larger.
Bar ditch is on the side and, yeah, I mean, we're talking major
So, it's definitely something to, to look at moving, moving forward.
I think the ideal part for this large streets that could potentially be four lanes, five lanes, we are looking at the RGV MPO as a source of funding, not just using city resources. Mostly because when you apply for their funding, they don't accept residential streets. That's the main reason we're, we're trying to focusing on, for this SIP residential and then for upcoming RGV MPO funding, the thoroughfare, the big streets, the eighties, a hundred-foot collectors. But we'll definitely add this one as part of the plan.
And to that point, Robert, I see that you have for District Two, West Roosevelt Road, I sixty-nine to West City Limit. I believe we would need to talk to the county as well about that one. Because there's a portion of it that the city owns and then there's a portion that the county owns. So, if we're going to talk to them about Morris, if we can fill them in on and I know I've gotten an initial green light from the commissioner.
Okay, so, we've got before us, the street improvements for the twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six and listed on here, and I've asked to add Bob Uker. And then there is Commerce from, to Wilson to Fair Park?
Yes, ma'am, that would be the southbound lane.
Okay, and then and then that is what we have before us. And then, separate from this, is the instruction of starting to look to see what the future of Morris Road will look like.
Morris and Roosevelt.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, for sure. Okay, is there any other discussion? If not, can I get a motion?
Motion.
A motion to approve the addition of Bob Uker Commerce Street and then to give staff the authority to start looking at Morris and Roosevelt. So, I second that motion with that additional language.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to item ten H. Consideration and possible action to approve a resolution providing the name of the nominee from the city of Harlingen for the appraisal district directors for Cameron Appraisal District Board of Directors. Do y'all have any nominees?
We don't have, and then I was looking at this on October thirtieth, is that right?
Yes, we actually have an extension for, to turn it in by tomorrow, no later than the next day, any nominees, so they can be on the ballot.
I remember they, they changed the whole process to now be an election and all that stuff, right? And I believe the gentleman we've appointed before has had positive reception from a different entity, so I forget the gentleman's name. This appraisal board.
So, is this something that we, because I know that we're going to be needing to pull the commission for a special meeting. Is this something that we can carry over or no?
No, because she says that we have to submit it in the next two days.
Isn't it say October thirtieth? I thought I read that.
The deadline for us, because I spoke to them, Mayor, was for tomorrow, no later than the next day. Because they're, they're having to put everything together for the ballot and the deadline for the ballot to be out was October thirtieth.
Okay, is, is, is there any nominations from the commission?
What's the name of the individual we have? I want to say it's Albright, but
Yes, 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 thank you.
Mr. Albright?
Yes.
Yeah, Argabright, David Argabright.
I'll make a motion to appoint David Argabright, reappoint David Argabright. And I, Mr. Argabright, if I'm pronouncing your name incorrectly, I apologize. But I make that motion to reappoint him.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Oppose.
Motion carries.
Okay, item ten I is consideration and possible action to approve a resolution for the city of Harlingen to deny the increased rates from the Texas Gas Service Company and to have the city's reasonable rate case expenses reimbursed.
Motion approved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries unanimously.
Ten J is consideration and possible action to cancel the city commission meetings for November nineteenth and December seventeenth, twenty twenty-five.
As it indicates there, if we have pressing business, we can always schedule a special meeting to address any issues that are required or if there's something from planning that is pressing. But I think this is important for those of us that want to spend time with family.
I don't agree with this. I never agree with us giving up meetings, especially since our meeting is the nineteenth and Thanksgiving is not to the twenty-eighth. So, that's like eleven days, so I don't know who's going to be on vacation for that long. I don't see why we can't be here for the
The non-teachers.
Huh?
The non-teachers that don't get all the breaks.
Yeah, but, so you're going to take like a two and a half week break or what? You ain't a teacher, you ain't cool that way. But I, I see if we can do it for one month, but for two months straight, we're only going to have one city meeting. I don't think that's fair to the citizens of Harlingen. I think when we sign in, when we take the office of commissioner or whatever it is, we have responsibility to show up, even when it's sometimes inconvenient, you know, it's not convenient. So, I could see maybe doing it for December, because that's, but like for November two, I think that's pushing it. I don't think that we should ever have two straight months where we don't have the two, the two city commission meetings. I think that's just the duty that we owe to the people of Harlingen, but that's just me.
Any other comments? Can I get a motion? Is there a motion to deny? Is there a motion?
I make a motion to deny the cancellation of the, of the, of only having one meeting for November and December.
So, I'm sorry, repeat, repeat your motion?
I make a motion to deny the cancellation of, well, I don't know, let's talk, do you guys want? I make a motion to deny the cancellation of, well, I don't know, let's talk, do you guys want December or both days to want to cancel them, or do you want to just do one?
I want to be here regardless, so whether you guys want to have the meeting or not, I'll be here. Unless one of y'all has plans that you would liked it, like that you have already planned out, I'm fine moving it, whatever y'all want.
Okay, so I'll say we can cancel the December one, because I know that's where most people usually travel in December, if you want. I'm good for either way, I'm here for both.
You can be here anyway. Okay, I, I have no travel plans on either of these days, but this is something that was brought to us at the last year and then the commission said it was not, uh, didn't come to the agenda and so we didn't cancel the meetings. And so that's why staff put this on, because it was something that we were going to do last year and we didn't. So if y'all want to have just one meeting in December, then we can have that motion. If you want to have both meetings and you don't want to, to cancel any of the meetings, then you can have that motion also. It's, however, whatever y'all see fit.
Okay, I make a motion to not cancel any of the meetings for, for the remainder of the year.
Okay. All those in, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries unanimously.
I abstain.
If we vote to cancel them, will you stay? Okay. I guess that's a no. Moving on, Ms. Mayor.
Moving on to item 11 is board appointments. Specifically appointed or discussion and possible action to include appointment and or removal of any position subject to appointment or removal by statute, ordinance, or bylaws.
I have none.
None.
Reappoint Architect Chris Sias to Construction Board of Adjustments.
Okay.
None.
Uh, Reenie?
I want to go ahead and reappoint, oh no, none.
All right, is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries.
Mayor, we don't have any executive session items. We are done.
Okay, well then we are adjourned. Thank you all for joining us.